Good evening. Welcome to the Wyndham Raymond School District Board of Directors meeting. It is Wednesday, October first, two thousand and twenty five. At six thirty P. M. we're in the Wyndham High School auditorium. May I have a roll call, please?
Sue Accardi. Jessica Bridges. Jody Carroll.
Here.
Caitlin Downs.
Here.
Marge Gavoni.
Here.
Joe Kellner.
Here.
Grace Lovett.
Here.
Christina Small.
Here.
Ginny Woodman.
Here.
Maggie Sewell.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There's just, uh, there's actually two adjustments tonight, uh, from when the agenda originally went out, and that is the addition of two new appointments, uh, which the board will get to under item ten.
All right. Next, uh, item five is public input. The purpose of public input is to provide an opportunity for the public to express their interests, concerns, and suggestions related to matters under consideration by the board. As this is not a public forum, the board will hear public comments without engaging in discussion or offering responses. Speakers must state their first and last name and town of residence before beginning their comments. Each person has up to three minutes to speak, provided that they maintain common decency and decorum. Complaints concerning individual students or employees will not be heard at this meeting. Resolution may be sought through the superintendent's office as appropriate. The chair maintains the authority to stop any comments that violate these rules. For further explanation of the rules, refer to Board Policy B E D H, Public Participation at Board Meetings. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We're going to move on to superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, seems like, uh, everyone knows I was away for a week celebrating our thirtieth anniversary, and so I think the last event that I attended before I left was a board meeting, and so, um, my time has actually been very, very short in the, in the district, so I'm being back. But we had a wonderful trip, and just want to say a big thank you to Christine and the rest of the A team for all their work while I was away and, uh, keeping as many things off my plate, and just had an absolutely wonderful trip. And anybody who ever wants to talk about Rome, it's a beautiful city, wonderful opportunity, uh, and just thank you again for the board for supporting that time off. Um, really, very, really appreciate it. Uh, really, the only item that I'd, I'd like to share tonight is just I had the chance to, uh, participate in and, uh, walk through the Space to Thrive grand opening right before I left on, on my trip, uh, and just really wanted to say, uh, congratulations to, to Donna Cobb and to Hannah Marshall, um, for the work that they've done in planning that facility and for becoming a great partner with us for, um, everything pre-K. And, um, if you've not had a chance to go and tour that facility, uh, I think it's probably something we could arrange with, with Donna and Hannah for the board to go ahead and visit that. Uh, but just a wonderful place, a wonderful option for our kids who, uh, for public pre-K would like to have another spot, uh, in order for them to be able to attend that program. Uh, but just congratulations to them. I did not get a chance to stick around and hear Governor Mills, but I understand that she came and gave some great words about the work and how that integrates into the work that the state's doing, uh, to implement pre-K. And with that, um, moving on to regular business.
All right, board roundtable. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Jody?
I just have one thing. I had the opportunity, just with that clear schedule this week, it worked out really well, to attend Jed Bloom's class today at Jordan Small Middle School, and just wanted to let the board know in that spreadsheet that Jed Bloom filled out that educational outdoor program that he's running this year, first time in the district, in first thing in the morning. He's noted that it's, um, seven thirty to nine fifteen. It's every week, so I think, um, well, he says every day, but ultimately you could pick a day and then just sort of set up at, it doesn't stop. It was put in at a set date, and I'm just going to change that to ongoing. Uh, he would love, uh, feedback and just for board members to go and see that space. If you have the opportunity, um, it's something that he's working on and will lend well to our future work around outdoor spaces and outdoor education in the district later, um, that we'll hear about later in the year that the Assistant Superintendent's working on with, uh, a broader district initiative. So if you have the opportunity to do that, and just want to thank, um, him for letting me in to see that and then shared some time in a co-taught classroom within Jordan Small as well between, uh, Lynn Latham and John Powers. Uh, they are teaming up to teach ma- teach math because of the way some of their scheduling worked, and so that was really cool to see, uh, two veteran teachers share time together and teach, uh, larger class math at the same time. So that was a cool opportunity. So I'm really appreciating, um, that spreadsheet and just encourage staff members to put in anything and everything that board members, um, might enjoy seeing, um, because it's good for them and mutually beneficial is, is the goal. So encourage you to take a, a look at Jed Bloom's program. That's all I had for tonight.
Caitlin?
I went to the, um, Cumberland Fair with the fourth grade, uh, fourth graders at Manchester last week, I think it was, and we were excited to find their flowers that they had on display for winning blue ribbons. Um, and that was pretty cool, the ones that they grew right at the school. Um, and we also enjoy the green beans that my daughter brings home regularly that they, that they grow at the school as well. Um, and then just with regard to the pre-K, I know he mentioned Space to Thrive, um, but for families, if we're still doing the lottery again in April, um, for Wyndham families, don't, 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 um, bat your eyes at Tucasa. I know it's kind of far away, but it is a ten out of ten experience for little kids. Um, it's only twenty-eight minutes from Wyndham, um, but well worth the commute, so keep that in the back of your minds when you're filling out your applications this spring, um, in two thousand and twenty-six because it is a wonderful program, um, despite the distance for us. I'm sure the way Raymond families are familiar with Tucasa and the wonderful opportunities it provides, but, um, for us Wyndham folks, it might be a little bit of a distance, but it's totally worth it. Um, and congratulations to the fourth graders at Manchester for their bouquets on display.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to committee reports. Finance.
Um, good evening. Finance will meet on October fourteenth, and, um, we have not met since our last meeting. The agenda will be out within this week.
Facilities?
Um, we have not had a meeting, um, so there's nothing to report at this time.
Policy.
Everyone knows policy met, right? Uh, so we had a great meeting on nine twenty-two. We finalized two policies for first read tonight, so we'll get into those, and we reviewed four others for your reference that were included in the packet. Um, we firstly met with Ryan Karen, the Wyndham High School Principal, and Lisa Garnow, our Director of Student Services, uh, was there to lend advice on other policies, uh, to have them weigh in on I K F graduation requirements. This policy, um, is, is really exciting, um, for us. So I wanted to share a couple of things. Interesting, exciting meeting around our administrator's vision for our students within the district. Highlights from this meeting included review of the current grad requirements and the prescribed versus required, uh, credits, uh, math requirements for graduates, the importance of keeping students in class and engaged in education that's relevant to their post-secondary goals and their interests, considerations for class blocks and available teachers for scheduling, new classes that would qualify for credits that may start or are currently electives. Uh, we also reviewed the success of the W R V C credits for students with principals joining together in recent years to agree on credit values for individual classes. E L Os, of course, were acknowledged for credit for students as well as options for students taking college courses, and how those count for credits in their, um, graduation requirements, and how post-secondary education reviews those depending on the college that they're attending. Next steps for this one would be for the, um, Wyndham High School Administration to present, uh, to the committee in January two thousand and twenty-six to the board, uh, with a potential review for the policy, any changes that they're requesting based on that larger discussion, and, and the, the vision really to distill it down is to add more courses to give students the option to do things that not only they're interested in, but are prescribed and meet their educational requirements, and then offer our students more diverse pathways, which is something we've talked a lot about and is the district's strategic plan as well. And, uh, we will look at what that looks like and, um, eager to hear new course offerings that are going to be requested that Mr. Karen tells us about. So we'll keep you posted on that one. Um, we met, uh, we're going to meet again October sixth at nine thirty to begin our work of doing reviews of required policies by old estate reviews starting in the A's, um, and we'll update you on what that schedule looks like in a future meeting. Um, Christine, do you want me to go through just the F Y I concept policies at this time? Is that the best time?
That's, I will leave that to your discretion.
Okay, so let me rip through them quickly. So we, as a policy committee, have, as you know, been trying to get on a cadence of reviewing our policies regularly, and because there's been many that administration has requested for us to look at and other legislative requirements, we, we've been busy for a couple of years. So now we're getting into this, uh, great spot of having the option to just review them, take a look at them, and quickly say, yep, they're good. So Lisa Garnow was with us and reviewed a couple policies. One of them was I H B A, uh, Individualized Education Programs. We last reviewed this in two thousand and ten. It's required for the district. We're going to make a nomenclature change, and this one, the purpose of this policy is to affirm the legal compliance that were aligned with the state and federal special education law, I D E A, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and the main D O E regulations. We are not recommending any changes at this time. We compared it to available samples, and, uh, we set just a review date of the last policy meeting. Um, questions on that one, feel free to reach out. We also last, uh, May, and we actually, uh, voted for some second, uh, reading on this one last August, two thousand and twenty-four for J K A A. We did make some changes to the use of physical restraint and seclusion policy and the regulation. So we had to take a look at this one, uh, again, because it was, our review was triggered by a legislative update to be reviewed, um, that took effect on nine twenty-four. Um, it impacts one singular definition for a term for physical escort for removing one single word voluntary, as you noted in your packet. This is a preferred in practice according to our Director of Student Services, Lisa, in that it allows our staff more latitude to make decisions that will provide the safest outcome for students, whereby student consent is not required and staff can make decisions within the purview of their training that's situationally appropriate. So it's a single word. It doesn't seem like a big change, but it's, it's better for, for the staff. Um, Lisa did comment that the committee, to the committee that they use safety care training for all of our staff specifically designed for special education in the district. Um, eminent risk is taken, um, seriously in the district in the sense that, that if anyone's really into looking at law, there's a pending definition for, um, a few terms in legislation that we won't comment on because they don't need to be addressed. But ultimately, she's building a new oversight team for special education across the district and, um, looking at the best training and care for staff and students in this pocket of the work that we do. So that was, uh, J K A A. No changes to the regulation recommended at this time. And then I mentioned we looked at I I B, our class size policy, and the only change to that one, it's not a required policy, we just had to update the statute for pre-K. So we just added that there was a staff ratio of eight to one in that policy. That's a simple update, and, um, there's a very clear outline in, um, D O E chapter one twenty-four on what that looks like for our pre-K classrooms in the district. And then I will save the last one, um, for when we do our first read, if that's okay. There was a regulation on the policy that we did that I'll just make a comment on at that time, but there's no changes recommended to that regulation. Um, so that's all I had for policy.
Okay, curriculum. Do you have an update, Grace?
Yes, I do. And unfortunately, Jessica was not able to be there, but, um, we did, we did meet, and a couple of other board members joined us as well, so that was, that was great. Uh, we, we, we saw a presentation, it was a very thorough presentation on The Sounds of Success, which is a curriculum written here in R S U fourteen by some incredible people, an incredible person in particular. Um, but certainly, uh, she, she gave thanks to the others involved in, in developing this. Um, it included the action research, uh, from our students, implementation of phonemic awareness work that is happening right now in our elementary schools. Uh, it truly is amazing, not just, uh, the work that the author has done, but the work that is ongoing, um, and, uh, the results are even more amazing than, than the work itself. So I just was really appreciative of that. The materials, the presentation is on the Curriculum Committee website. If you want to take a look at that, um, it will give you quite a bit of information there. We did quite a deep dive into it. Um, the enthusiasm was certainly very evident, um, of all involved because it's really making a difference in how our students are going to be learning to, to read, and just the successes of it is, uh, is quite a bit. We had heard a little bit about it previously, but we really had the deep dive today and really appreciate the efforts of all involved in, in the work. Um, so again, there's information for everyone to take a look at, public as well, on the Curriculum Committee website. Um, I don't know if the others that were there to observe wanted to, to say something as well, but, um, that's the brief, brief report.
The enthusiasm was palpable.
Yeah.
It was an amazing project. It's, um, the research apparently has been in the public realm for twenty years, but these people took the research and, and made it a workable, step-by-step program that's easily followed. It's going to make a lot of difference in how time is used. Um, and I was just saying to Grace that we have some brilliant people in Wyndham, really brilliant educators, and we should be really proud and grateful. It was a great meeting.
All right, that's all.
I totally agree.
Okay. Um, that was all for committee reports. I, I realized that I skipped you at board roundtable. Did you have anything you wanted to share? It's okay if you don't. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I realized I didn't check.
Um, well, for those of you who don't know, this week is Spirit Week, so I think it's really great to see everybody showing their school spirit and just being really happy and united as a school, and it's just really great to be in that, um, environment all week, so.
Thank you, and I'm sorry. Um, okay, now we can move on to Report of the Secretary. May I have a motion, please? I didn't pick anybody. Marge, you want to do that one? Nope, that's fine.
Um, I move to approve the minutes of this September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Second.
For a discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, new appointments. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the following appointment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Eric M., music teacher, Wyndham Primary School, and Andrea Me- Methon, Methon, speech language therapist at Wyndham Primary School.
Second.
For a discussion?
Let me just, let me just say a comment. Um, so Eric, you had approved previously, uh, for a two-fifths position, but, um, due to a staff member having to leave for a family emergency, is going to take a full-time position, so it's a change in his contract, and we're excited to welcome Andrea, who's going to be a speech language therapist. That was a position that was opened up, um, right at the very, very beginning of the school year with a staff member who was leaving. So to find somebody for this position, but to find someone absolutely outstanding for this position, we're super excited. So, um, she is in another district, and we'll have to wait a little bit of time for her to finish out her requirements, but.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Now we are at item eleven, State of the Facilities. Mr. Hanson. Do you have a presentation, Bill? It's okay if you don't. I just... We had the screen down in case.
Good, good evening. Hanson, R S U fourteen, Facilities. What's that? Okay. So to answer your question, um, I have a presentation, but I, I'm old school because I'm old, so I printed it out to go by because I wasn't sure what the setup was, and possibly the way that I might work, I might have been trying to get it done for the last minute, so there wasn't time to check that they needed to see what's here. So I'm going to go hard, hard copy. I can share more, and, and I will say to you tonight, I wish I could tell you that I had all the wonderful pictures and, and things I had want to put in my presentation. I simply don't have time to do that right now. It, it's a little crazy. It's very exciting, and I'm loving what I'm doing, so that part's great, but time is really my enemy right now. Um, I did ask Greg, Greg Marzus with me tonight if he could give me two more hours this, today. He was unable to do that. So I'm a little disappointed in Greg that he wasn't going to give me two more hours, but, uh, he's, he's been a great addition to our, to our group, so that's really been my challenge. So I think it's been about three years since I've actually talked with the, with the group, and now I do need to have my glasses. That's another thing that's happened. Um, so hard to believe that I started here in two thousand and nine. I don't know how that happened because I remember my first day walking through with Donna Stevens, meeting everyone. Um, I think I've told you, I, my first conversation with a staff member was they told me that their husband was an H V A C tech and he was going to fix everything, if I could just bring him in. And I just said, can you just give me a little bit of time to figure stuff out, and I'll let you know. So that was two thousand and nine. So I've had the pleasure of being here since then. It's been quite an adventure, and I feel very fortunate. Um, so I'm going to turn the page. So one, one big thing in the, in the facilities department, and I just want to stress, is that we have a wonderful group of people that make this all happen. It, it is really quite amazing, and a lot of people don't see those pe- the staff because they're working summers and nights and behind the scenes. And, uh, when we were building, looking to build a new middle school, I think I drove the architects crazy because I said, I want to be like Disney. I don't want you to see here and know what's going on. It just works. It's there, okay? That's, that's the vision that, that I kind of had for our department, and our, our staff really embraced that. And I will tell you, I've walked into many different districts, and I walk into our buildings, I'm really pleased with what I, what I see. Okay, and our staff can make that all happen. That's not me. I'm not out there making the floors polished and the ceilings clean and the, and the, the room's ready for the next day. That's the staff that we have that are fortunate to have, the people who are really committed to these buildings. So it did become kind of an idea. Um, right now, we have, um, we have four grounds members, and we were looking to hire a fifth one, and the reason we're doing that is Manchester Field came online. Have you been up there? What an amazing place. And again, a testament to our ground staff, if you looked at when it was handed off to us from the contractor to where it is now, it's remarkably different. And I don't believe there is any, um, any athletic field at a, at a little league level that is at that quality of those fields up there, and we're just really fortunate to have the talented staff to make that happen. It's going to serve the communities very well. Um, so we have, fortunately have two district-wide maintenance staff members. Greg is here today. He's one of the two. Mike Anung is the second. Um, I'm not going to lie, I wish I had five, okay? But we got two great workers, and, um, it, what's nice is, is we're able to kind of choose the projects and things that are going to work internally versus where we're going to use the tools or the outside resources to make things happen. More of the regular ongoing things, we use outside resources on, more of the specialized things, or immediate fixes, we're using in house, in house with, um, so it's, it's been really nice. Um, thirty-two custodians. Uh, but, uh, cleaning all these buildings each night and during the day. Um, and then we have a, a shared, um, delivery driver, a, a facilities use coordinator, um, and that's really kind of important because we continue to have more and more pressures for facilities use. Um, so again, that's great, right? That's what they're here for. So it's really special. Um, we have a shared facilities athletic coordinator, risk, safety, and workman's compensation specialist, and, and you get stuck with me too. I'm the last part of that. So it's, you know, overall, we're looking at forty-four staff members that make this all happen. So this is, I've, you've heard this before, for me, this is really important. When I look at our mission, okay, again, I said I want to be like Disney, right? I'm going to read it to you again. It's really important to me. It's what we try to live by, is to operate and maintain R S U fourteen properties in such a way that allows the instructional staff to focus solely on educational deliverables without distraction from building systems or maintenance issues. This will be accomplished through planned maintenance, continued efforts to improve efficiencies, incorporating latest energy savings technology and methods, and implementing long-term solutions for, to operational building issues. Now, a quick bird walk, as, as Tom Davis used to say, I, I kid people that, that red green doesn't work at R S U fourteen. Everyone here knows red green. If you've seen it, if you haven't, you should check it out, but he doesn't work here because he doesn't provide long-term fixes that are low cost, okay? So, um, again, our staff really embraces that, so I'm really proud of that. So where do we stand, okay? High School, newest building. It was a new one I got here, pretty new, okay? Twenty-one years old. Not so new. Okay? Um, Wyndham Middle School, forty-eight years old. Still kind of young compared to how old I am, but it's getting up there, right? Um, Field Allen, um, nineteen forty-six was when it initially was built, but we've done some heavy renovations to it thanks to board support. So the last renovation was two thousand and twenty-two, and if you go in the building, it doesn't look like a building that was built in nineteen forty-six anymore. I think it's actually a very nice educational space. Wyndham Primary School was one, was a big deal in Wyndham because it combined- because it combined all the local local schools to one. That was in eighty-nine. So thirty-six years ago. Right? Doesn't seem possible. Manchester School was originally built in seventy-two. I was six years old then. Renovated in two thousand significantly. So that building's twenty-five years old since the renovation. So think about the number of of grades, levels of children have been through that building since it was heavily renovated. Raymond Elementary School, beautiful building, absolutely stunning, great location, twenty-six years old. So Jordan Small School, originally built in sixty-seven, maybe even possibly before that because it's a little fuzzy on the information, renovated in eighty-seven and two thousand and one. So talking twenty-four years old. So the average age of our building is thirty years old. I don't think that's really bad when you compare to the statistics of the entire state of Maine. But our I'm looking forward to our new building, which is minus two right now. Really looking forward to that net taken off. But that's a it's going to replace two of our older buildings, which will be nice and helping that that age down. So I'd like you to think about buildings as living structures, right? That's really important to think about that because they really are, right? So, you know, one of the things that that we all need to live is our skin, right? That's really important. Well, that's for building, that's building envelope. That's the roof, that's the siding that keeps the water out of the building because we all know what goes inside the building. Nothing good happens, right? So a big part of that is the roofing. So in the high school, our our roof ages between twenty-one to to twenty years old. Guideline life is twenty-five to thirty for EPDM. EPDM, what's that, Bill? So that's basically the rubber roofing, okay? There's a it's an acronym for for the for the what that stands for, but simplifying it's a it's a flat rubber roof. Okay, and that's what we have in the majority of the high school. The middle school, Wyndham Middle School, I'm not going to spend too much time on that, but it's at least twenty-six years old in portions of it, some are some are newer. Field Allen is about sixteen years old. Primary School, the metal roof is thirty-six years old. This summer, happy to say that we started replacing part of that roof. So that I'm really pleased that the gym cafeteria has all been replaced. So that's that's a it's a really good thing. Manchester, twenty-five years old, was re-roofed in in two thousand. Jordan Small School, very fortunate, we roofed in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, so that's roofed relatively new. And and Raymond Elementary School was two thousand eighteen as well. So overall, I think if I look at our grade for our roofs, we're probably sitting somewhere on a B. Maybe B, almost a B plus. We're we're doing okay. If we could get rid of the 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 middle school, which is probably has the worst roof right now, we'd probably get that. But Mike definitely would be a B plus. So the next thing you think about is like what's our most important organ is our heart, right? Which is really is the boilers we have in our buildings. And I have to say, thanks to the board and the time I've been here, we have made some tremendous upgrades in where we stand. It's really been fantastic. So high school, our two main boilers are six years old. Guideline life on those cast-iron boilers is probably thirty years. So that's that's fantastic. We have one that's twenty-one years old. Someday I'd like to replace, but I can ride it as long as I can because I have two two brand-new ones sitting right next to it. So that's kind of where we're going at. The middle school, our boilers are twenty-three years old, and there's a forty-eight-year-old water heater there. Still working, still working. Primary School, you've got a boiler that's one years old and a boiler that's eight years old. Great place to be. And also, I want to press to the primary school, it actually has dual fuel. We can run that 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 school on either propane or natural gas. And both boilers are set up to do that. Literally, it's a real quick change, and we can do that. And because they're condensing boilers, they're highly efficient most of the time. When they're not, when it's not highly efficient is when we have a design day outside. And when I say design day, it's minus ten degrees or minus five degrees out here in Maine. I can't run the boilers cold enough to condense. That's how they get the efficiency is that they actually condense the exhaust gas and has to be below two hundred and ten for that to happen, right? Or two twelve, or it won't condense. And that's what's great about energy change is that's where all the energy is. When you can get out of the shower and you start shivering, that's evaporation that's occurring on your skin. It's pulling that heat from your body to make that water evaporate. That's 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 kind of what happens with that flu gas is going up. It's cold enough, it's going to condense. Manchester School, three years old. Great place to be, right? And if you have a water heater that's eight years old and a water heater that's five years old. Jordan Small, six years old. Raymond Elementary School, one year old for the two new boilers. And what's nice about about RES, that's fantastic, is they're condensing boilers. But when we did the upgrade this summer, we converted the entire building now to to low-temperature heating, which means we'll heat the the building with a hundred and ten-degree water. So with that, you know I will be condensing those boilers all the time. It also allows us to have our backup heat. It's not a boil, it's actually air source heat from outside. We have the first in the state of that particular unit that's designed to heat and cool. We basically can swap it from heating to cooling, and it just reverses the process. So rather than putting the heat outside from the building, it brings heat from outside again. So it's really kind of neat technology. And what's really amazing about it is has a coefficient of performance, which is COP of about three and a half to four. What does that mean? Well, if I give you, if you give me a dollar and I give you back three and a half, is that a pretty good deal for you? That's basically what the heat pump does. It uses a dollar's worth of energy to produce three and a half dollars' worth of worth of um, heat or cooling in the building. So again, very, very efficient. So our heart's pretty good, too. I would say that's an A. I was going to give it a great, we're doing really well. Ventilation is the next thing, right? When you think about lungs we breathe, so ventilation is really important. So when I started here in two thousand and nine, Field Allen had no mechanical ventilation. It had little submarine windows, I called them. They were copper windows, about two or three per plostrm. It was absolutely quite amazing that we were actually holding classes in that building. I have pictures of them once I ever see it, but it's quite different than it is now. So the high school, believe it right now, is is kind of our older mechanical systems with twenty-one to twenty years old. And what's really changed since COVID, we also learned the importance of higher level of filtration is helping improve indoor air quality. So that's really a challenge there. Field Allen is about fourteen years old. It was when I put that um, new equipment in because it's from two thousand and eleven. Primary School is two years old. Manchester, three years old. Jordan Small, well, thirty-eight years old. And the middle school in Wynd- in Wyndham is about forty-seven years old. But RES is less than one. So again, I think if you look at where you are for infrastructure, we're doing pretty darn good. And I'm really, I'm really, I'm really proud of that because it puts us in a good place to provide, to meet that goal I have of being like Disney, you're having it not interrupting educational experience is really important. So um, we'll skip that, so I need to know that one. Talking about different types of capital, you know, I've talked about this before, we'll talk about it during budget. But so one of the things we do is we have a ten-year capital plan. And I did not bring that tonight because there's not enough time. I'll keep it a little bit shorter. But the way the process works, that is Superintendent Howe and Assistant Superintendent Christine Burnett will work with with myself and the rest of our our A-team to develop a ten-year plan. Okay, and it's fluid. It can never be a constant because things change, right? A need will come up that we had no idea, and we have to just move on our our feet. But that's really what happens. So if you look at our asset, our asset base of somewhere between, I used to say two hundred million, but I think it's more like three hundred million now based on the cost of our new school. You know, if we looked at everything having three hundred million, everything having a fifty-year life, we'd need to replace at a rate of about six million dollars a year. Now, when I started here, our capital, our total capital is around two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. That's a long ways from six million. I will say that thanks to your support, we've gotten a lot closer to that three and a four or five million dollars a year between operating budget and and um, capital and capital reserve spending. So that's why I can tell you we're we're doing so well on those important building components that we've got right now. So summer accomplishments, again, deep cleaning of the buildings. We're talking five hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet of building that was deep cleaned. Thank goodness I didn't have to do that. I would not be done. Just again, amazing piece of work from by the staff to make that all happen. And again, you go into the buildings, they they really look well-maintained and and taken care of, and it's it's really amazing. Raymond Elementary School, three-phase power upgrade has completed this summer without with a lot of pain. Equipment came in late, we did get it done in time for school to start. So the nice thing is is now all of our our buildings that we really are going to be working for in the future, all three-phase power, which provides us ability to to really provide those really, really good interior environmental controls because we can do that. Raymond Elementary School, HVAC upgrade has been completed. Still a little bit of shakeout going on that's working well, and I've already received comments back from staff that on the second floor, they actually feel really comfortable. Looking at building temperatures, it's well within a degree of two, top to bottom, which is really wonderful. So really pleased about that. Primary School gym and cafe structural roof upgrade. It was just, that was an awful, awful thing. Just a terrible project. I never thought it would end. I think we're we're done now. Again, the challenge with that is when we do a re-roof, the D Wing requires that we do structural upgrades or in actually requires that we verify the structures made for it. In eighty-nine when that was built, there were different codes required for the roof structural numbers. And then in eighty-nine, when the steel was purchased, yeah, I didn't realize it had lead-based paint on it. So we had to do abatement, structural work. It became a two-year project from what was supposed to be a one-year project. So but that is behind us. We will have to do some additional structural work on the far end of the D Wing, heading towards fifty-two or fifty-four C because there's similar similar issue, but it'd be much smaller in scope. And be better prepared for that this time because that was just a bit of paint. Happy to say that Primary School gym floor had some small issues with some paint bleeding through, but it's actually co-bases done and they're using it. We've got two transitions we need to work on because the doors aren't closing quite properly on it with the new transitions, but that will get that done, so it's usable now. Looks great. We are going to have to come back. There's a few places where there's some bubbles in the paint that will be addressed next year when we when we screen and refinish it. But really looks nice in the color of the floor. It's a nice and light color like the main gym floor. If you drive by the loading dock, we finally, after the many years, thanks to some great work from Greg and Mike, we've got the overhead door in. So now we can bring pallets in without trying to prop doors open and blocking the blocking the entire um, loading docks so you can't get by. So it's really a nice upgrade. The new the new middle school actually has a loading dock with a dock leveler on it, so it's going to be well set up to receive big things. You may not notice this. In the high school, if you go into the onto the first floor and some sections of down here, you'll notice that the the sprinkler heads have been replaced with recess heads. It always worries me that I can reach up and I can touch them with my hand. Unfortunately, the second floor was not replaced because I didn't want to have a mutiny because the custodial staff had gone and waxed all the floors up there. And there's no way to do that without with guaranteeing that there's going to be a water leak or something that would ruin the finish they worked so hard on. So next year, we'll get the second floor. It provides a nice clean ceiling. And also, the installer did say to me, I'm really surprised you didn't have a problem because a bunch of these heads have been hit. And if you have a sprinkler head go off, it's it's not a good thing. But the thing is, if anyone's listening, I will know who did it because they will be covered with really black, dirty water. So you can't hide from it. And you'll wish you didn't, actually. So those are just some of the accomplishments. A lot of other small projects. I mean, it it wasn't, the summer wasn't a wasn't a fun one. There was really too much going on. But you know, I really feel like we got the most on that I've done in the in the sixteen years I've been here. So sustainability, really important. We talked about this. So one of the things that's great is this year to date, we've seen sixty-two thousand dollars in savings as a result of the offset solar participation. And and we still have a quarter to go. So we're going to get the over the eighty thousand dollar mark. So that's a position. I mean, that's just fantastic. Really excited about that. We are still in the process of replacing fluorescent fixtures with with LED. I want it to be done in twenty twenty-five. Not there. Now I'm going to push that out to probably probably twenty, thirty I'll be done. It's just a lot of work because it's it's not a one-form replacement. They actually have to have to do a fair amount of work to that. But we're getting there. It's it's our goal. All our new, our A-handlers have energy recovery on them if it makes sense to have them. And the only place it doesn't is if there's a lot of outside air requirements, like for cafeteria, you can't do it because you're not bringing the air back. But that that reduces your your thermal load by a significant amount, twenty to thirty percent because you're bringing, you're reheating that outside air from the air you're exhausting. So it's really huge. And then the the last thing is is we have a very, very elaborate digital control system that controls all our buildings. So we schedule systems as tight as we can so I don't run equipment. It doesn't need to be run from this and from there. So that is all part of the things we do for sustainability. I talked about indoor air quality, but really, indoor environmental quality is one of the things that we're actually shooting for, which is a step above indoor air quality. What I mean by that is that when students and staff are in the spaces, it should be low background sound levels. There should be flexible lighting controls. There should be consistent temperatures. I talked about the mere thirteen, fourteen filtration. Um, and then our CO2 levels we run here, I typically run twenty to thirty percent lower than what the ashtray standard is to try to get more towards what the outside air is. I just think it's better and more, it's healthier. And with energy recovery, we can do that without without spending as much money on energy as we would have to. I'm almost done. So challenges ahead. So as I said, roofs on primary school, high school, and Manchester are portion their gate, their guideline age life. Non-emergency right now, we've maintained the PM, but we are going to start planning for that, and that will show up in the capital plan. Okay? This is a kind of a big one coming up, and I I'm really excited about our new IT director, Matt Vannenberg. Really enjoying working with him. I love working with Bob, he was great. But Bob, Bob and I had a great time together. But Matt's really hitting the ground running really nicely. And one of the things we think about is our premise wiring, so the voltage wiring in these buildings. I just want you to realize that all our premise wiring was put in before iPhone one came out. So if anyone would like to have an iPhone one, we can go around. Our seventeen is out now, right? That's what we have. So it's a lot of CAT five wiring. Some of the standards put in were not there. So we're going to start working building by building to start replacing that premise wiring, getting up to the latest standards so that the network can continue to be robust and continue to provide the educational work that we need to have it do for the student, success of students and the teachers. High school HVAC, okay? One of the things I'm really excited about when I go by the new building, and you guys probably won't be as excited, but we have these beautiful penthouses for our equipment to go inside out of the rain, out of the snow. If I have to work on it, it can be warm, right? Well, the high school, we have five units that sit up there in the roof out in the rain and the snow. Well, their their guideline life is twenty to twenty-five years. Now, you can probably squeeze it further, okay? But then I get into the risk of when it's broken, it doesn't work now. I'm impacting education, which is not the direction I want to go in. So that's something that we'll need to look at, and those are not inexpensive. And then then finally, the thing to think about is school renovations. So we talked about when last things, buildings were last renovated. Well, changes like pre-K, greater reconfiguration in space needs teams. If you look back in in nineteen eighty-nine, the primary school was was built, the space needs for specialists in in language and all the other things we have now was not there. and all the other things we have now was not there. Now they've all changed. So, you know, I'd like to think that we're forward-thinking, so we're, as we're looking at the next steps, how do we best meet the needs of all of our students? So just something to look at. So in conclusion, I mean, for me, it's just a huge thank you to my forty-four staff members. Really can't do without their help. And they're just amazing people to work with, and they're often behind the scenes and don't really, they're not in the limelight. In fact, many of them don't like to be in the limelight. But they're just amazing people, and they're there. And I've had custodians say, "Hey, Bill, I'm really not feeling well today. I'm going to come and work half my shift, get myself done, and get home." I mean, what more could you ask for? A person who's willing to come in even when they're not feeling great, because they wouldn't have that space ready for kids the next day. So just amazing people. So if we see a custodian, just thank them for the great work. I want to thank also my maintenance staff and ground staff. I've got people I can count on. So if I'm not here, I'm not worried about things not happening, because I know they're going. It's really great. And I've heard from so many people, and say, "I wish that our fields in our school looked like the ones you have." Just, it's great to hear that. And Mike's taught me a few things. When I go to schools, I look and I go, "That's not like us." So it's really wonderful. Again, the administration that works with me, between the A-team, Chris and Christine, and our central office staff, again, I can't do this, this work, with all their help. We have a really great team. And it's very special to be part of that. And then finally, the school board. I talked to a lot of directors who don't have the support that I receive every year. One director, I was explaining to him, I hire a paint crew every year. Staff members come in and paint. He goes, "We don't have money for that." I go, "That's how we keep things looking nice." And the nice thing is there are own employees that don't work summers, and they love to come in. It's their building, this ownership. It's really a fantastic thing. So the support that we receive, business partners receive from the school board over my sixteen years is outstanding. It's why we are where we are right now. And so it's been a great story. So that's kind of where we're at. On budget time, you know, we'll go over, we'll have our plan together and next steps. Chris has told me that next summer has to be a slight slower summer for me, and I'm going to embrace that. I really am. But at this point in time, I'm ready to answer any questions people may have.
Grace?
Not a question, but I just want to echo. You said thank you to your staff. I want to also say thank you to your staff, to you, as well as administration. Truly, the way that our district keeps up the buildings is tremendous. And it just doesn't even compare with the other places I've seen across the state in terms of really just being outstanding. So thank you for all of your hard work and your forward-thinking. And again, thank you to all of the staff as well. It's so important to have that focus as a entire teacher, to just be able to focus on teaching and students, and not worry about the surroundings. So thank you for doing all of that. Thank you.
Jody?
I would be remiss if I didn't share this story, just to pack on to that. I was speaking with Donna down at Raymond Elementary, and she was describing the headlamps that they purchased this summer to be able to work, because the power was out to be able to finish air conditioning and HVAC this summer. But their work trudged on, and they were there with headlamps cleaning the school. And I would also, just for the lighter side, say that you see videos online about teachers or staff joking about, "Well, thanks for cleaning out my whole classroom, and so you could deep-clean it, and I came back and it wasn't clean." That's not the case here. I mean, that's, that is, when you deep-clean something, that's a tremendous effort. So I think it's always worth mentioning, because I couldn't figure out what she was saying when she was talking about headlamps. I thought, like, "What are you talking about? You're in the dark?" So I think that's just a testament to what you're describing. So, well done.
Yeah, the power was off at RES as we were doing the upgrade. It was about six weeks. Five, six weeks in that range. So, but yet they still worked hard to clean the building, get it ready in time. So I will say that Donna did an amazing job, and I know that she wished she had more time to get stuff done. And I explained to her, "Next summer, we will." But this was going to be the summer we had to really find a way to get through. And they navigated it very well. So very fortunate.
I'm going to comment. First of all, thank you for coming here and just providing this opportunity for the board to hear about this. I want to thank you for the planning that it took in order to put us in this position to have, to just, I don't know if you gave a final grade of our facilities, but I feel like you have explained pretty well that we're in a really good spot. I feel really comfortable about where we are and what the next steps are. And that took work to plan for. I really appreciate that, and thank you to your staff for making it happen. Yesterday, I came across an article in the Press Herald about the state of school facilities in the whole state. And it was pretty dire. And it just put in stark contrast for me how great we are doing. And again, it's because of the work that your staff does, because of the planning that you have done, and, you know, because of our community that's willing to support this year over year. Every time I see your budget, I'll admit to a little bit of sticker shock. But it allows us to end up in this position and to look down the road and be able to plan for the things that we know are coming. So I just really thank you for that work, so that we are not in the news for a different reason, that we had to close our school, because it was, you know, it didn't have heat, or whatever it was. So just thank you very much.
I will tell you one more funny story. Is that when I was early on here, Donna was the business manager. I'd say, "Well, Bill, this is going to be a year of flat budget, no increases." And I turn my budget, and he says, "This is up five percent." I go, "Yeah, it is." He said, "You don't pay me to tell me what you want to hear. You tell me to tell you what I have to tell you." So I always, I wish I could cut my budget a hundred percent. It'd be great, because it could all go towards education. And one of the things that I'll say is that I don't have an admin. I probably wanted a few facility directors that does not have one, and I'm not complaining, because that admin to me is an ed tech. I'd rather have the ed tech. So that's just how I feel. But so, you know, that's, I wish my budget could be less. No is not an answer I like to say often enough, and Chris does remind me that's in the vocabulary. So I need to work on that. But it's been a great time. And your support, this board support, so many people I talk to do not have the support that I have to make things happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so.
Have a nice night.
Thanks, Bill. We are going to move on to District Emergency Operations Plan Approval. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the RSU fourteen District Emergency Operations Plan as presented by the District Safety Team on September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second?
Public comment? Board discussion? Oh, sorry, Grace.
Now, again, just a thank you to all the work that goes into that as well. It's a huge amount of work, and it's incredibly well done. And so, again, thank you to all involved in that.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, policies. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the first reading of IHBAA referral, pre-referral of students with disabilities.
Second.
Public comment? Board discussion? Take it away.
Yes, so at our last policy meeting, we reviewed IHBAA as part of the cadence to review required policies in the oldest cadence. We went ahead and consulted with Lisa Garno, Student Services Director. We updated this one in twenty-ten. So our first step was to compare this against MADSEC, which is the Main Administrators for Services with Children with Disabilities, for those who aren't aware on all of our acronyms. And it's a nonprofit membership association for special ed administrators. So it's an important group that we take policy samples from. It has a volunteer board that has representation across thirteen regional groups in the state. The Main Administration for Services with Children and Disabilities, or MADSEC, believes, I think it's important to share the mission, just because we use their samples for our policies that are required to meet legislative requirements. So just give me a moment just to describe for some of us that are newer here. So they advocate for the right for all students to receive a free and appropriate education. In public education, they provide support to members, opportunities for professional growth to main educators, and leadership in shaping policies and practices, which impact the quality of education for children with disabilities. So we will use their samples often when we're looking at special education policy. We did, we are recommending the title change from referral and pre-referral of students with disabilities to the one noted referral in general, education intervention. So that would be in alignment with current language. We did add some language in yellow, which really just reflects that, I'll just read the highlighted portion. Referrals of students to the IEP team may be made by parents at any time. And the new section reads, "And by professional school staff, regardless of the results of the initial child find activities. But after completion of the general education intervention process, other individuals or agency reps, included representatives of DHHS, with knowledge of the child, may also make referrals." So essentially, what this does is it's the question of the child find activities come into this process, and RTA process comes from, but after completion of the general education intervention process. So we identify a child through child find. We would go through the general intervention process, and then it would move on from there. So it's just, it's an important clarification, essentially. And we're removing a child find policy cross. It's not required for this policy. And that's all we have in terms of recommended changes for you on this one. And then I'll just mention that the regulation that goes along with this, which, a quick reminder, the regulations are really more about the procedural aspect of policies, updated against, again, MADSEC twenty-nineteen, with adding the child find policy cross to that side, and finalized the review dates. So we provided it in the packet, but there's nothing to show you in terms of changes for this one.
Questions for Jody? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next policy, please.
I move to approve the first reading of EBDD, Temperature Standards for School Buildings.
Second.
Public comment? Board discussion?
So this is a new policy required for the district. I mentioned at our last meeting, we had the opportunity to collaborate and meet with Mr. Hanson. And this particular policy will be required as of nine-twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. The main legislation enacted a law in this past session that required mandated school boards to implement and adopt a written policy establishing minimum and maximum temperature standards for school buildings. We did consult with Bill around how he considers standards and how he applies those in the district as a first step, because really, to us, the golden nugget here without samples provided by the Department of Education, or in this case, MSMA, was really to understand what those standards were. And so it literally reads that you have, "The main DOE recommends that school boards take sufficient time to adopt thoughtful, responsive temperature policies that reflect the unique needs of their local communities. And local policies should take into account school building ages, design, and HVAC capacity. Local microclimates, as well as student and staff health and safety, should also be considered in the development of local policy." So we did get that update two, three days before the policy was due to be enacted. So we went ahead and put together a draft. That doesn't really establish temperature standards, though, in terms of the DOE providing guidance. So we were glad for Bill's recommendation. We did review this against an MSMA policy that, again, came sort of at a late hour. It was just a few days before it was meant to be due on the twenty-fourth. And we didn't see anything substantive compared to the draft we had already put together as a policy committee. So we went forward with the draft that we're presenting tonight. I just wanted to basically go through, I guess, a couple of the standards that we included in this policy. So the policy is in alignment with what is best suited to our district, establishes temperature standards that align with the following two standards. One is ASHRAE, the International Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, founded in the late eighteen hundreds. They have a standard fifty-five that outlines thermal environmental conditions for human occupancy. That was one that Bill referenced in our committee meeting. And the State of Maine Bureau of General Services' Recommendations for Indoor Workplace Comfort was the other document that we referenced. And that takes into account standards, but also accounts for relative humidity, contributing to equivalent heat indexes, which is obviously a big factor in how we manage our buildings and what the experience is for our staff and students. Finally, the committee was able to hear about the diverse needs of the district for heating and cooling across each building. It's great timing with Mr. Hanson here tonight, just talking about age and how we heat and cool the buildings across the district, how we utilize technology in the district to cycle after hours, and other mitigation techniques to keep schools comfortable while minimizing the costs across all of our buildings, which is not a small task. Having said all of that, the minimum temperature established during heating season in instructional spaces we've included in the policy to read should not fall below sixty-eight degrees during occupied hours. And a max temperature during the cooling season in the same spaces should not exceed seventy-six degrees Fahrenheit. And if they do, mitigation strategies with times associated with those are outlined in the policy.
March?
Jody, during the discussion, in the paragraph where it says, "Temperature deviations may occur due to extreme outdoor conditions", is that where you're taking care of the humidity piece of it? Because I think I read in there that they recommended that humidity be also included. And you did mention when you were talking, humidity, but it isn't in here.
Sure, so the second reference with the Maine Bureau of General Service' Recommendations really comes into effect more on the summer season, on that hot side, relative to if your heat index is X, and the real temperature, the real field temperature in a building can vary between one to two, up to ten degrees hotter, for example. So I didn't answer your question, but the index of humidity is definitely going to come into account. The lower temperature for us is really just about what's comfortable. But in this case, our discussion in committee was really about more how hot it gets. So second floor of Raymond Elementary School, it's eighty degrees, but it's forty percent humidity, it's seventy percent relative humidity inside that building. So the real feel is actually ninety-two, for example. So there's a chart that's very prescriptive to looking at that. And when, as it was described, administration takes a look at that with Bill in terms of, say, the temperature's going to be a hundred degrees predicted for the day, they'll look at that by, I think it was nine AM in the morning, they'll look at that heat index and then account for mitigation strategies, not only to bring the temperature back down, but to look at where students may be able to fit in those comfort zones that we're desiring, so moving them in a different part of the district or within a single building.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, executive session, support staff contract. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve going into executive session to discuss the Raymond Wyndham Educational Support Professionals Contract, R W E S P, pursuant to one MRS A subsection four oh five six D, and not returned to regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries.